Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the June 28th City Council meeting. If you'll please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brigham?
Here.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Here.
Councilmember Walter?
Here.
Councilmember Bagby?
Present.
And Mayor Paula?
Here. Okay. Conflict of Interest Declaration. Does any council member have anything they want to declare?
I'm going to have to recuse myself of new business under item number 12.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing none. Agenda review. Any changes or deletions to the regular agenda? I do want to pull item number three. It's a proclamation for Joyce Mann. Apparently she's ill this evening and won't be able to be here, so we'll re-agend that. Excuse me. Re-agendize that for our next meeting. Anything else? Okay. Seeing none. Like to -- next item is Public Comments. Any person wishing to speak to the City Council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have a right to speak on any item on the council agenda during that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Each person wishing to speak must come down to the podium when advised and speak directly into the microphone. That's really important because this is being recorded so people at home could watch it that were unable to attend. Each person will have up to three minutes to speak, and they'll be able to speak one time under public comment. Would anybody like to address the City Council on any item not on the City Council agenda? Okay. Seeing none. We will close the public comment and move on to item number one, and it's a Certificate of Appreciation to the Lions Club for the Bus Stop renovation. And it's my privilege to read that. It's a certificate of appreciation to the Cloverdale Lions Club, and the certificate of appreciation is presented to the Cloverdale Lions Club, June 26, 2018, in recognition of the work, the club's work in renovating the bus stop at the corner of Cherry Creek Road and Foothill Boulevard. The City of Cloverdale City Council commends the Cloverdale Lions Club for their volunteer service to the Cloverdale community. And it's no secret that Cloverdale Lions Club, like all our Cloverdale clubs, provide a tremendous service to the city, and on behalf of the council, we definitely want to thank you. It's my pleasure to come down, and somebody here to accept that certificate? I'd like to present it.
My name is Tex Dickens, a Cloverdale Lions Club member. I happen to be the chairman of the project in question here, but I would like to make one comment. It went very well. City cooperated with us extremely well, and one comment that I'd like to make is that we had a gentleman in the area who offered to pay for the benches, so we're getting stainless steel benches made by Fletcher Fabrication. I'm throwing that name out there. So our thanks to the community and for all the help they gave us on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number two. Again, it's my privilege to be able to present nine certificates this evening, and I'm going to read the first one. They all read the same, other than the name, and our city clerk, I'm going to come down and present the first one, and then she'll read the name. And for those that are here, I'd appreciate it if you come up when your name's called, and if you're not here, I will make sure I give it to Todd Landz, who will make sure he gets it to you. So with that, I'd like to read the Certificate of Appreciation to Todd Landz. This certificate of appreciation is presented to Todd Landz on June 26, 2018, in recognition of all the work in renovating the Snack Shack located at the Cloverdale City Park. The City of Cloverdale City Council commends you and thanks you, all of you, for your volunteer service to our community, and they did a fabulous job. That's -- Snack Shack was in really bad shape, both inside and out, and it's just, it looks beautiful, and thank you for that. So it's my pleasure to come down there and award this.
Great plans?
Great plans?
Yep. Zach Trub? Aaron Sprague?
The next item on the agenda is the Consent Calendar. All items under consent will be considered together by one action of the council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Does any council member have any item they want to remove?
I do not, Mr. Mayor. When we've completed, I'll come back and make a comment on item number six, please.
Thank you. Would any member of the public like to have any item removed? Okay. Seeing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar, item four, five, six, seven, and eight.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Second. Okay. So, motion by Vice Mayor Russell, second by Councilmember Walter. Get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Mayor Paula?
Aye. Okay. I'd like to open it up for a comment. Councilmember Walter, you wanted to make a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for allowing me to represent you at the selection of the permanent planning commissioner and the alternate. For the first time in a long time, we had seven really good qualified candidates put their names in the pack for planning commission, and I want to thank each and every one of them for doing that. My recommendation, and we just approved, was Jason Turner as the permanent alternate. Jason had been a substitute planning commissioner for a number of years. He's in good standing with the community, and he really seems to be well versed on The second individual, Andrea, that we selected, she was also qualified, but I liked about her was the fact that she works for CROPS myself, so she does have some renewed background already coming out for her as an alternate. So I just wanted to share that and thank each and every one of the seven applicants who came and submitted their application. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I'd like to thank you for agreeing to sit on it as our City Council liaison to the planning commission. I thought it was important that you participate. City Manager, do you have any comments on that? I know you participated as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to dovetail on Councilmember Walter's comments, Commissioner Turner has been an active participant on the commission as an alternate commissioner, and he's taken that role very seriously and always delved into the topics very deeply, and always had a lot of meaningful feedback and comment on projects, so it's great to welcome him to a regular member of the commission. We've also had the opportunity to interface and work with Ms. Reyes. Ms. Reyes, maybe you can wave to the council. Thank you for making it this evening, and again, this Councilmember Walter, she has got a really good background in engineering, which will be beneficial for the projects that come before the planning commission.
Thank you. Would either one of the commissioners like to say a few words? It's time to do that.
You're here for me all day.
No, you need to come down if you would. Okay. All right. Well, welcome and thank you for your volunteer service. Appreciate it. Okay. We'll move on to public hearings. We have two of them. We'll start with the first one, item number nine, Public Hearing on Notice to Destroy Weeds for Specified Private Properties Located Within the City Limits. City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council. At your previous meeting on June 12, you adopted a resolution that declared certain weeds located within the City of Cloverdale a nuisance, and follow-up to that action, staff mailed out certified letters to those three property owners. I'm really happy to report that all three of the properties followed up on the request to get those weeds addressed, and they are considered compliant. We did receive correspondence from Fire Chief Jenkins, and he was very happy with the collaboration between the City Council and his staff and our staff on getting those addressed. He did indicate, you know, there are some minor nuisances throughout the city, nothing that is a significant concern, and they'll continue to work on those areas up to and closing post Fourth of July, but given that the three properties that were included in the resolution that the council adopted have all been, weeds have all been abated, there's no further action at this time. So you don't need to adopt the resolution that's included in your packet. Just want to report out that positive thing.
Well, thank you. Since this is a public hearing, we'll see if there's any public input. Would anybody in the audience like to address the City Council on this item? Okay. Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the City Council. There's no action required, so unless there's questions, we'll move on to item number 10, which is a consideration and possible adoption of Resolution Number 039-2018, establishing and updating the schedule of fees and charges for city service and repealing previously adopted and conflicting fees and charges for such services. And I believe that's our finance manager or our city manager who's going to handle that.
This is a --
Pull it up.
What we're looking at tonight is, are the fees and charges that we charge citywide for engineering, for anything that's general fund related. We're also going to look at the utilities and basically all of the fees. This is something that we do annually in pursuant to government code. We've noticed that this is a public, that this public hearing was going to happen, but the city has maintained a policy of recovering up to the full cost of providing voluntary services and regulatory activities from persons utilizing them. So the costs are paid by the individuals that are receiving the benefit. There are several government codes that prohibit the fees and charges from exceeding the actual cost, which includes personnel and any other costs of materials or time. Staff has gone through the fees and charges and has determined that there were no changes were necessary for commercial cannabis fees because they were recently updated. The community development, finance, and administration, police, and public works fees have increased only by the amount of the 3 percent COLA that's going to happen on July 1st. In the engineering department, there was also the 3 percent increase, as well as three charges were changed to include staff time that was not currently incorporated into the schedule, and those were based on department staff recommendations. The utility departments have incorporated the 3 percent increase, and the monthly rates for water and sewer were already approved through July 19th, through a previous 218 rate study. So the monthly rates have already been approved. The only changes would be the 3 percent for any miscellaneous going out and hooking up a meter or something like that. If these fees are adopted tonight, the changes will become effective in 60 days. For ease for staff, we'll incorporate these as of September 1st, and I'm open to hearing any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just a very quick comment. That was, thank you very much for giving us that explanation, because I was going to ask for one. I have a large note written here. Next time, could we have the increases indicated?
I'm sorry, the what?
Could we have a summary of what you just told us next time we do this, so that when I look at it, I don't have to worry about going to the file and trying to find last year's to compare to this year's and figure out what the raise might be?
Yes.
Okay. Because it's tough to, I don't like to vote on something unless I've given it a lot of thought, so I appreciate the summary. I think we could just, maybe just something in red or, you know, one of those things, you know, that you usually do. Okay? Another summary. We would appreciate it. Thank you.
Actually, maybe just add another column that just states current and recommended.
Just something quick.
And then you could see it quickly.
And accurate.
Any other? That's a good point. Thank you. Any other comment from council? Okay. This is a public hearing. Would anybody like to address the City Council on this item? This would be the time to do so.
Yes.
Okay. Seeing none. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to City Council. One comment I have is regarding the, about a year ago, when we went through this, I asked that this go to a subcommittee to review basically the nonprofit groups, such as the Cloverdale Nonprofits, being our service clubs, the three big ones, who we recognized this evening, the Lions Club, who contributes a tremendous amount to the city in the way of labor and product, and to raise the money, they typically will do barbecues in our park, and it's just something that I feel we should not be charging them, and so went to the subcommittee. And also with the, same with our Little League, we're one of the few cities in this area, in fact, the only one, I believe, that doesn't really have a park and rec program, per se, primarily due to our inability to fund one. So we depend a lot on volunteers, and all the volunteer coaches, all the volunteers, members in the community who make donations to help the Little Leagues buy their uniforms and do the sports. So I asked that we at least take a look at that, because I don't think it's appropriate when we're asking people to donate money so these sport activities could happen, then we charge them to use the city park, so, or the field. So I know that went, and I was going to ask maybe if somebody on the subcommittee could address that, if it was in fact discussed, and because I see that there's been no changes. So.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Brigham is the chair of that committee and their commission. I'll just share a few things with you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Then I will back it up with what I recommended.
Okay. So we really came away with no solid recommendations at this point, but we do have a finance subcommittee coming up later this week, and we'll make sure that's agendized for future items, because one of the things I was thinking, and I'd kind of like to get the pulse of the City Council before we move forward with it, is when a, an organization like the Lions volunteers, they step up and they renovate our bus stop with a new roof, new railings, and just put a lot of sweat and money into it, what I'd like to see is next time they come in front of the city manager and ask to use the city park, and we charge them $450, that the city then turns around with some type of a resolution, a budget adjustment for the City Council, where we reimburse in the sense of making a donation to the fireworks for $450. When the Rotary comes forward and does something for us, whatever that fee is, $450, $200, we turn around the next day and cut a check for that same amount, a donation to their Coliza Park maintenance. So just kind of turn around and give it back as a donation to their pet project. So that's going to be my recommendation, and I'm sure we'll be agendizing it, the chat with David and Susie about it, and of course Chair Brigham.
I would like to, before, just expand that to talk about the Little League youth groups as well. Thank you.
Actually, my recommendation was slightly different, or what we were talking about, was that since we don't have a Parks and Rec Department, and the numbers that we do charge are so incredibly low, I think it was like, we made like, less than $4,000 off rental last year. So my idea was just keep the $75 application fee and have no charge to anyone across the board. It would just be a way to keep track of who's doing what. But why not? I mean, what's the difference whether we get $3,800 or not? It would just be so much easier than trying to get Susie to cut a check. The line of connection could be easily broken in that kind of a situation, and if you wanted to, we could even go so far as to forgive the $75 application fee, but we are going to need a way to track it so that staff can actually book things properly. So if we did have just the 70, or even lower it, say a $25 or $50 application fee, and nobody pays anything, and it's going to make up a little bit for the fact that we do not have a Parks and Rec Department. That's my recommendation.
So. And I totally understand where Councilmember Brigham's coming from. I would just like to recapture some of the expenses. Three or $4,000, while it's not a huge amount, it is an amount that I'd like to see Parks and Recs contribute to.
I'm just going to say very quickly, Mr. Mayor, I thank everybody for this discussion, and particularly for you for introducing it, because we talked about this before, and it just slipped by with everything else that was happening, and I think it's a really, really important point. I like the idea of an application fee, however, because I like the idea of an application, just to ensure that something weird doesn't happen, you know, and we don't end up with, you know, people from Mars coming here doing weird things. Well, they talk to me occasionally.
Oh, boy.
I'm rather proud of that. At any rate, yeah, I think it would be a really, really good idea to take a look at this, and not just from a financial standpoint, but to encourage, and I think that's where you're coming from too, to encourage more activity, not less.
Exactly.
Because that, by the way, is probably the only way we're ever going to get a Parks and Rec staffer, is if we have enough call for it that we can find it in the budget. And I think our attorney is jumping up and down, so.
I just wanted to make one point in that, as you consider the various options you're talking about in the future, one thing to keep in mind is that, and none of them would cross that line, but the other fees that you do charge could never, you know, be expected to supplement the ones you're not charging. They have to be the full cost recovery and nothing more. So if you're going to create a program where there's a forgiveness or a counter donation or something, it would have to be some other chunk of money from the general fund.
Right.
So, yeah, just to keep that in mind as you're thinking about all these different options.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, actually, I'm sorry, I regret not having this brought up during the budget process, because, you know, we should have set money aside for that, but I just want to make sure it's going to the local programs or local kids that are in lieu of after-school programs, or, but I mean, if someone's having a pre-wedding party or a, you know, something at the park, I think that they need to pay full fee, but we should have a clear understanding that it's local service clubs and Ponytail League, and that those are the organizations that, which are, which are serving the purpose of a Parks and Rec program, that should be eligible for this and not have it be available for everybody, and for private parties and things like that.
That's why the application fee.
Yeah, that's the application fee. I think that's important. I'd like to, and we don't double-book people and really make them mad.
So if we could get this on the subcommittee's agenda, and I'd like it to
It already is.
I'd like it to come back to the City Council with options, and you might run those through the legal to make sure that the options are appropriate, but I think the emphasis, at least from my standpoint, and I'm hearing concurrence here, is really we're talking about very limited scope. The Cloverdale Youth Leagues that are volunteer nonprofits that, that every year they play, as well as the Cloverdale Service Clubs that make a lot of contributions to the city. So you guys can come up with the options, then we can weigh in on them and hopefully move it forward.
Mayor, council members, and certainly understand that direction, I just want to share with council that there's been two separate reports to the Finance, Admin, and Police Committee, one on the revenues that are generated from park rentals, and then finally the expenses associated with park maintenance activities. Finance Manager Susie Holmes and I, along with your city engineer, are working on a gender report to bring back to council that will provide the council with that data and that information, along with options for the council's consideration to, to address the, particularly the nonprofit organizations that, you know, do a lot of community projects. Did want to share with the council that, at least in so much as groups like the Lions Club, that most recently submitted a park reservation, I made a determination to waive their fees, you know, because they requested that as part of their application, because they were doing fundraising for local events and local activities for our community. So just want to assure you that your staff does, has been making those determinations and weighing the community benefit for organizations like the Lions Club that, you know, do such wonderful contributions for our community, but that we're also preparing to bring forward for a full council review, some options for you to consider in terms of addressing these park fees that are in the schedule tonight.
Great. No, thank you. Okay. We'll move on to New Business, item number 11, Consideration and Possible Adoption of Resolution Number 040-2018 of the City Council.
This is a resolution.
We read the resolution. From Page 71.
Oh, action. Thank you. No, I apologize. We need to take action on the resolution.
We sidetracked ourselves.
Yeah. So I guess when it comes back, we would amend that portion of it, based on that.
Correct, Mayor. After review of options for the park fees, park rental fees that are identified in the resolution, and the council identifies a recommended or preferred option, we could bring this fee schedule back under a public hearing to revise and update accordingly.
Very good. So we have a resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I'll offer the resolution by title only, please. City of Cloverdale City Council, Resolution Number 039-2018, a resolution of the Cloverdale City Council, establishing and updating the schedule of fees and charges for city services, and repealing previously adopted and conflicting fees and charges for such services.
Second.
Did you have a comment?
We did.
No.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Better to check than miss it. So, motion by Councilmember Walter, second by Councilmember Bagby. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Mayor Paula?
Aye. Okay. Now we'll move on to New Business. Consideration and Possible Adoption, Resolution Number 040-2018 of the City Council, authorizing the city manager to execute an individual-at-will employment agreement with Mr. Kevin Thompson for the City of Cloverdale's Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director. City Manager.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'm really excited and delighted to be able to bring this forward for your consideration this evening. In your packet is a, an employment agreement with Mr. Kevin Thompson. A little bit of background about Mr. Thompson, you know, he hails from the south side of Chicago. He graduated from Southern Illinois University and decided to relocate to California, where he attended both Chico State University as well as Sonoma State University, where he attained his master's in business administration. Most recently, Mr. Thompson is currently working with the City of Calistoga as a senior planner. planner and assistant to the City Manager. Previous to that, he was employed with the City of Bucaia as a principal planner. Also had the opportunity to work with Mr. Thompson when he was the Economic Development Manager with the Town of Windsor. And one thing I'm really excited to report is, prior to his experience with the Town of Windsor, he started his career in nineteen ninety-nine with the City of Cloverdale. So he's kind of come, he's kind of come full circle in his career. And I think, I think that speaks greatly, that he wants to come back and work for our community. In terms of what's before you tonight, it is a resolution that would authorize me to execute an at-will employment agreement with Mr. Thompson, included in the packet, in the agenda packet, and as we're required to do, is outline the terms of that employment agreement. Mr. Thompson has indicated that he would commence employment on July twenty-third of two thousand and eighteen. Can't come soon enough. The base compensation for the position is one hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-five cents, and that's a step three in a five-step range, so he has opportunity to increase that base compensation with successful completion of performance evaluation. There is a provision for severance for a three-month base salary, as well as a quroll of two hundred hours per year vacation leave and a hundred and twenty hours of sick leave. The employment agreement included in your packet does include an updated provision for administrative leave, that's very similar to the agreement that you approved for the City Manager, where it's a use-it-or-lose-it provision within the year. One minor typo I did want to report is that the agenda report does refer to a mobile device stipend of seventy-five dollars. The agreement technically references fifty, so it is a fifty dollars per month employment agreement. I'll point out that Mr. Thompson did review the employment agreement and has agreed to it. The mileage reimbursement is as allowed for under IRS for actual miles driven, and then finally, there is amount budgeted for professional development conferences, and that's subject to the council's annual budgeting process. With that said, I'm really excited to welcome Mr. Thompson to the position of Community Development Director, Assistant City Manager, with your approval of the resolution in your packet tonight. I think he's got the requisite background and professional skills. Joining him this evening is his wife and two children, Cindy Thompson, Madeline, and Natalie Thompson. And I would encourage the council to invite him to the dais if you'd like him to speak a few words. But otherwise, the City Manager, I recommend that you adopt the resolution authorizing me to execute the at-will employment agreement with Mr. Thompson. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I open it up for public, why don't you come on in? Kevin, if you would, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Again, my name is Kevin Thompson, and I'm just overly thrilled to be here. As the City Manager alluded, I did start my career here in nineteen ninety-nine. I moved over from Chico and became the Assistant Planner here with Joe Heckel. Maybe you guys, maybe some people remember Joe. And that was great, you know, I really enjoyed it. And since I've been here since nineteen ninety-nine, I've watched Cloverdale grow into just a vibrant little town, full of arts, and music, and families, and great quality businesses, and I'm just really thrilled to be there. And as David mentioned, this is my family. Speaking of families, this is Cindy, Natalie, and Madeline. Natalie's ten, and Maddie's eight. And we rarely miss a Friday Night Live, so you probably will be seeing us there. So I just, and looking forward into the future, I feel that Cloverdale is just poised to do great things, and I'm just really, really excited to be a part of that, and I can't wait. And in closing, I'd just like to thank the City Council for considering this resolution, also thank the City Manager, the City Clerk, and the City Attorney, Jose, David, and Linda, and all the staff that helped me get to where I am right now in this process of the employment process. And I look forward to my start on July twenty-third. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from council before I open it up?
I just have a quick one, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'm really interested in learning more about, it's okay, we can do that as we go along, because I want to hear the public comments, but I'm particularly interested in your talking to us about the Business Concierge Program, which I know you were very, very instrumental in developing. And we have improved in Cloverdale, particularly under our last, current City Manager and our prior City Manager tremendously in terms of our customer service, and we also have a great staff. But I know that everybody here knows the depth and breadth of the Concierge Program, and I'm very, very interested in following up on that, so expect something. Either way, by the way. And can we get resumes on your two daughters for like twenty years from now? Now, I was in the staffing business, and you grab talent where you can find it, okay? And you get smiles like that, you hire them.
Thank you. Any other council comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do remember Kevin working with Joe Heckel when I was first on the City Council in two thousand, and he left shortly thereafter, as did you, so welcome back to Cloverdale. Staff, I just want to thank you. I was reading through the agreement here, and I was happy to see that some changes were made. Page three of the contract, item number five, six, both one and two, were all at the last reworking that the council did in this at-will agreement, so thank you for doing that. And again, Kevin, welcome to Cloverdale.
Any other comments from council? Well, I've had the pleasure to sit through and observe. I didn't participate in the evaluation, but to listen, and you're just welcome. I mean, you've got a tremendous background and resume, and a lot of skill set that's going to be so beneficial to our community, so we're really excited. I'd like to take a moment and open this up for the public. Would anybody like to address the City Council on this item? This'll be the time to do so. In case seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment, bring it back to City Council. We have a resolution. Somebody like to offer it?
I'll offer the resolution. City of Cloverdale City Council Resolution Number oh-four-zero-two thousand and eighteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale approving an at-will employment agreement with Kevin Thompson as Cloverdale Assistant City Manager slash Community Development Director, and welcome home, Kevin. Good to see you again.
Do we have a second? Would somebody like to second the...
Second.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Brigham, and second by Councilmember Bagby. Could we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Brigham.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Russell.
Aye.
Councilmember Walter.
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Mayor Paul.
Aye. Great. Thank you, and welcome. Nice to see your family as well. Okay, so now we're on item twelve. I believe Councilmember Brigham's going to recuse herself on this one. Please make a note in the record that she is going to be leaving the dais.
Yes, I'm leaving. I do not have any financial interest in this, but as advised by the attorney, my attorney, I am not supposed to sit on this, so there you go.
It's up to you. Okay. Fantastic.
Patrick King.
Linda, did you get that?
These are...
Okay. So once we get this set up, I will introduce the item here.
I don't care.
You don't?
We're going to get on with life.
You're living in the Palisades. I know there's one pretty good song, "Sister, you're a prophet," and it had, for many issues.
Thanks.
Mayor, members of council, maybe why we're getting the presentation dialed up, I can provide you with an overview and the request of this item tonight before we turn it over for our presentation.
Yeah, why don't you do that? Let me introduce it first. Item number twelve, to review proposal submitted by Silking Enterprises LLC to host the Women's Cup Cannabis Event at the Cloverdale Citrus Fair, and consider whether to authorize the City Manager to execute a letter to the California Bureau of Cannabis Control, providing written approval for the applicant to engage onsite cannabis sales, too, and onsite consumption by persons twenty-one years of age or older at the event. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The item before you was generated as a result of submission of a proposal by Silking Enterprises LLC requesting that the City of Cloverdale write a letter of support to the Bureau of Cannabis Control for a cannabis event to permit adult consumption, as well as adult sales at the citrus fair. I do want to note that the, in the agenda packet, it referenced an event being hosted at the citrus fair in the month of October. Patrick King has identified, on behalf of Silking Enterprises, an updated date and timeframe for the proposed event to be held in either the second week or the fourth week in April on a weekend. As this council knows, you've adopted a comprehensive commercial cannabis ordinance. One of the items that that ordinance does not address is special cannabis events like this particular item. When Mr. King approached city staff about authorizing the, writing a letter to the Bureau of Cannabis Control, as is required by the state regulations, we advised Patrick that it required council approval for, in order to authorize staff to write a letter in support of that, in support of a proposed cannabis event. Outlined in your packet is, you know, the applicable requirements associated with city approval for a temporary cannabis event license, and I think, you know, I think that addresses the request. So staff decided to bring this forward for your review, and determination as to whether you support authorizing your City Manager to write a letter for this event. And I know Mr. King would like to provide a presentation overview of the event logistics. Included in the packet, obviously, is his letter requesting the support for the event, along with a letter from the citrus fair indicating their support for the event, and finally, a event proposal that really outlines the intent of the event, you know, which is really for Women's Cup, and I know Patrick's going to touch on that in more detail.
So before we start that, would you confirm the date? I'm sorry, did I hear you say that it's going to, the second or fourth weekend in April versus October? Is that what I heard you say?
That is correct. Patrick submitted an updated proposal this afternoon, and it indicates that the proposed event could take place either during a weekend in, on April thirteenth or fourteenth, or April twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
The basis for that is so that Mr. King has sufficient time to organize this type of event.
Any questions of the City Manager from staff?
No, I get it.
Okay. All right. Patrick.
Patrick King, Cloverdale residents, council staff, everybody, thank you for giving me the opportunity on, you know, somewhat of a quick notice to get this up and running. I did change the event. Reasons why we did change the time is, for one, the approval process, it takes a lot of time, a lot of planning to pull off something that we really want to pull off, and the October date is a good date. Then winter comes, and harvest, and a lot of issues happen, so we pushed the date over to April thirteenth and fourteenth, the weekend after Easter of two thousand and eighteen, or nineteen. And, you know, there's a lot of reasons why I'm here in my town of Cloverdale, and the reasons why I want to keep it here in Cloverdale. And I'll be pretty quick, because we have a lot to go with, but you guys know me, you know my heart, you know where I'm at. I get phone calls every day from this community asking for education and support on healthy cannabis products. I'm not a doctor by any means. I do my best with giving advice or finding sound advice from other locations, or setting up doctors with patients, hospice nurses with patients, and do my best in my due diligence to serve the community as people are calling out. With this event, why Women of Industry event? It's pretty simple. You guys, you know, the women in my life are surrounded not just cannabis, and all these events are so cannabis-heavy related. This is not a high-time show. This is not the Emerald Cup. This is an educational event of how to use, and what is different extracts, why some cannabis products and CBD is toxic when it's being sold to you and derived from overseas, and industrial hemp that is being, you know, heavy agriculture industry that's coming in. There's not a lot of value to a lot of it, and a lot of people are, a lot of companies are selling a pipe dream, and taking your dollar at the other end. My mission's to change that, and to help educate, and hold up high the right people doing the right things for the patients of this industry. My wife, my wife is my rock. She is, she's an amazing lady, she's a patient, she understands the mission, you know, she has created this whole thing, Women of Industry. My wife is my rock. She's, my mother was my rock. My mother was the reason why I'm standing here right now, those two ladies. And then the Women of Industry is just not cannabis. There's so many people in my life that has held me to where I am today, from my attorneys behind me, from, you know, I have a wonderful event coordinator, Michaela Miller, there's web designers, there's so many, so many different women in this industry that don't get recognized all the way across the board. It's not just a, here's a trophy for the highest THC product you can put on it, no. I want to talk to the people doing policy, the women in policy that are making moves in this industry to save people's lives. Those are the ones that this event is for. I'm just going to pass through a lot, educational panel. I know, I don't know, many of you know, a good friend of mine is John Easterling. John is, Olivia Newton-John's husband is John. John is a well-world-renowned doctor, medicine man. His nickname's Amazon John, he goes all around the world to the indigenous people taking medicine, and he is, he's leading the world on cannabis medicine, and he wants to come to our area and educate, you know, whole plant extraction, all the real true methods. And, you know, Olivia Newton-John has had her fight with cancer, and, you know, John's medicine has saved her life, no doubt about it. So she is, right now, part of the entertainment, so we're working out those dates as well. If she isn't the entertainment, she wants to come in satellite with a panel of speakers and talk to everybody about her husband and how, you know, the situations occurred in her life, and what cannabis has done for her and people that she knows. So I'm not going to keep going on. You guys know enough of where I am. I'm sorry that, you know, to burden another cannabis thing, honest, but I feel that, I feel it's my calling. I feel it's my calling. I feel that education needs to happen, and I could take this whole show, this whole event, to another locations, in other locations around, but for what? This is where I am. This is my hometown. My local community is calling me daily, asking me, I need help. What do I do? All right? And I'm just a middleman, just trying to help, so let's bring the, let's bring the real people, the real doctors, the real hospice nurses, the real policymakers, the real women of industry, and educate our community. It's, for our community, this is huge. Again, this isn't high times. We're not putting on a cannabis high times event. We're putting on an event for the world, a classic gold standard event to head the world on what we are doing and what we need to be done, and what this industry is really out there for. And that's a patient. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michaela Miller. I am the event coordinator for Seed to Soul Festival that I want to quickly present to you and give you a little bit more information about. Quickly, my background is working with different festivals and events, mostly in Napa County, some in Sonoma County. I've worked operations and production for the Napa Valley Film Festival, Bottle Rock, Napa Valley, the Sonoma Harvest Festival, which is now taking over the B.R. Cohen Music Festival and other various events. So this is a particular project that I'm very passionate about, picking up on Patrick's passion and bringing this to Cloverdale and really setting the stage for what cannabis events and education can be. I think that there's unfortunately a lot of stigma around the cannabis industry, and as things are coming into kind of the new era of education and medicinal use and educating people properly, I think we have a real opportunity here to reshape how these events present themselves to the world and to the community and become a more highly-used and understood product. So just going to go quickly through this with you guys. There, I guess there were a little formatting issues, so you'll have to forgive, I wouldn't normally throw the G down there, but we'll see, we'll see how it goes through the rest of the presentation. I just wanted to give you a quick glance of some of the branding that we've been working on with our designer. We really wanted to take the design and the look and the feel of this away from what I have traditionally seen in cannabis events. We usually see either a big pot leaf or a big, you know, bud or something like that, and a lot of really dark imagery, dark colors, black. So we wanted to go with something that really had a Sonoma County feel that is where this event is truly rooted. We went kind of with the brown wood look, the green and bright colors to, again, emphasize growing and agriculture, and just something that's a little more approachable, a little more, you know, community feel and not scary, I guess, for lack of a better word. Our location is going to be at the Cloverdale Citrus Fair, obviously an ideal world here, and we're working a lot with the citrus fair to work with their infrastructure. They obviously have a beautiful, you know, fairgrounds. We're, the picture that's hard to see at the bottom, I know you've all received a copy of this, but that's actually our CAD drawing that's being worked on by our engineers. So we're trying to update the floor plans of the entire festival grounds as it is right now. I don't think the floor plans have been updated, at least the ones I've seen for several decades. So we're working on getting those updated, and then the goal, obviously, long-term is to be able to give funds back to the citrus fair to continue improvements and advancements on the property to go forward. The other notes in here, just obviously, this is a given that this is a weekend event. This is not an event that will be taking place over long periods of time. It's a Saturday and a Sunday when school is not in session, so just making a note of that. We're going to focus on some musical performances, so I gave a few examples of some stages. Again, bright colors, fun, welcoming. We're not going to be having R&B, you know, bands, rap, rappers up on stage. We really are going to go with more of a bluegrass, soul, folk, but our focus is really towards female local artists, and that's going to be our fun, something I'm really excited about for this first year out of this event. We're featuring the women in the industry, of course, which is panel discussions, educational discussions. John Easterling leading a lot of these discussions about medicinal use and education. We are also putting together a board of females to be our advisory board on this event, so from now forward, going through our planning, we'll have those women in policy and women in the industry to kind of help guide and focus with this event. We'll also be doing awards. As Patrick mentioned, this isn't really about who grew the best this or that. It's, it's really about what women have helped us get to where we are and what award can we present as a sign of kind of gratitude to, for what they've helped us achieve. For our vendor and exhibitor tents, we're going to have indoor and outdoor exhibits. We're really trying to create a very clean environment, nice clean white tents. I've definitely been to my fair share of these events and seen the way some of these can kind of look, come across looking very dark, loud music blaring out of each individual tent, and, you know, an overflow of just kind of decor and messiness. We really want to go with, again, a very welcoming look, an approachable place where you feel like you can go get education about these products and information. We are going to be, again, focusing on the local cultivators, educational experiences. We'll have some interactive places where people can understand how something is created and interact with that individually. And the areas for cannabis consumption would be designated elsewhere and out of sight. Couple slides here going into more the legal and compliance side, and we also have our legal team here to answer any questions once I get through this. But the event will obviously be strictly 21 and over, no alcohol served anywhere, no children on site. We will have a limit on what people can purchase daily. Only licensed retailers will be able to sell the cannabis goods. Licensed distributor will actually manage all of those products. Any food vendors that come on site will, of course, be permitted by the Sonoma County Health Department, and we will have our legal team overseeing all of our compliance. Issue there, too. Security. So this is just a really rough outline of, you know, bird's eye view of the Cloverdale fairgrounds. So the green line you see is the perimeter of the fairgrounds, which is currently fenced. The stars are where I have the heaviest emphasis on man's security outside of the festival. The orange line on the south on Citrus Fair Drive is going to be kind of a lower bike fence that we're going to create an actual lane for ingress and egress for the guests so that there is no danger of them being, you know, in the street and overflowing out into the streets. So we're going to create kind of an extra buffer on that sidewalk area for security purposes and have a man crossing guards to the parking lot, which would be in the south lot, oops, there below the Citrus Fair Drive, south of Citrus Fair Drive. And then the other red line that I have there on the west side, on Washington Street, we've got these nice chain-link fences that would have scrim on them, and scrim, for those of you that don't know, is kind of a mesh material that can be printed on. It can look visually really nice and branded to the event, but it can also serve as directional to guide people to the festival entrance, parking, exit, things like that. It just happens to serve as a nice secondary purpose of also being eight feet tall and blocking the school behind it, so in case, not that school is in session, but again, just an added bonus there. We will have ID checking, wristband and credentialing for everyone entering, and are working with law enforcement on the overall security plan for this, have the means to pay for overtime hours or any additional security or law enforcement needed within this, and will, of course, be providing a full security plan to law enforcement before we start the festival. Financial management, just real briefly here, we'll obviously be accepting cash and electronic payments, so we'll have secure cash handling and safe storage for that onsite. Our record-keeping and tax collection will all be managed, again, with the help of our legal team to make sure we are compliant and applying to the tax board regulations. And all of our sales will be run through a licensed retailer and tracked through a central POS, meaning we'll be able to track every sale that happens and collectively know that we are in compliance for all of the tax purposes. And I can speak to any of this or Lauren, once I kind of get through this, if you guys have additional questions. And just lastly, the community goals and benefits. Obviously, focusing heavily on education and awareness in the community, encouraging responsible adult use. Benefits to the City of Cloverdale include a potential monetary donation from the ticket sales amount, so a certain amount of every ticket can go back to the city. Benefits also to the Courtney Davis Cancer Foundation, and then the benefit to the citrus board, where they're also going to be receiving some proceeds, and then the improvements to their infrastructure over time, we're hoping will benefit the fairgrounds for other future events and, you know, that we will use, but other people will benefit from as well. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else going to speak out of your team? Okay, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, council staff. I just wanted to briefly introduce myself. My name is Lauren Mendelson. I am with the Law Office of Omar Figueroa. I am going to be assisting with legal compliance for this event. You might recognize me from a few months ago. I've been helping both of the Kings with their different endeavors over here and making sure they stay compliant. So if you have any specific legal questions regarding this proposal, I am happy to do my best to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Does that conclude your presentation? Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions from council?
Not yet. I want to hear the public comment. I get a lot of comments and questions, but...
Okay, so I'm going to open this up for public input. Would anybody in the public like to approach and address the city council on this item? There's a book down here. If you could be kind enough to sign the book, and you have three minutes, and your time doesn't start till you sign the book.
Jamie King, Cloverdale, and I'm going to make this short and sweet. I'm really excited at the thought of something like this coming to our town. You've heard me speak here several times before about safe access. Safe access to clean medicine for this community is huge. I am not a big proponent of these big shows. Believe me, I've been to the Emerald Cup, I've been to Chalice, I've been to High Times. I get really upset at the fact that the party is more important than the information. I would like to see an event like this with the information is a heck of a lot more important than that party, and I think and hope that this will encompass something like that. So just my two cents. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item?
Mayor, city council, my name is Dave Sampson, and I just see this as such a great opportunity to set a standard for where this is going in the future. It's an opportunity for the City of Cloverdale and all of us to work together to really change the paradigm that the stigma has attached itself to this business. You guys have already broken a lot of ground and have been very progressive in how you've approached cannabis in general. The idea of a Women in Industry conference in a, in our very rare industry that actually is dominated by, by women in all facets, from the legal side to policy, to some really amazing medicinal endeavors all over the state. It's fascinating, actually, and I just wanted to encourage you to put yourselves behind this and know that the best interest of this community for, from what I've come to know, Patrick, are the very first thing that comes out of his mouth whenever decisions get made or considered. So it's my two cents, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? Okay, seeing no one rise, I will close the public input, bring it back to council. Council, any questions? Vice Mayor.
Actually, I don't have questions of the same ones I started with, and I'm happy about that, because when I began, my first questions had to do with the common potential concerns that I hear all the time about cannabis events in general. And there are many of them all over the country, and they vary tremendously. I was particularly pleased to hear a comment about the party atmosphere. Sometimes, frankly, I've not been to them, but the descriptions I've had from folks who have make me feel maybe I should go back and be like, I don't know, 1967 and hate, you know? That's not exactly what I want to see here in Cloverdale, and I believe that's not what you want to see. My interest comes a lot from the fact that I know who you people are. I know what your standards are and what your love of the city is, but I also know that people will be concerned very, very much, whatever our decision, particularly if it's a plus, you know, to go ahead. The parking, the traffic, and let's be blunt, a bunch of stone people walking around, you know, with the trash and the problems and the things that have developed in places like San Francisco, for example. We just have the mayor-elect of San Francisco talking about the problems that they've faced with one of their, their big event there. And I did see that you addressed in your proposal a number of these issues, and I was very happy about that. But I want to make sure, for example, that we talk as much as we can today about the parking issue and the traffic in general and how that can be handled, not only on your side, but on the city's side as well, because the other point here that I'm concerned about is that we not overburden our city and our police at a time when we don't have the funds to do that. I'm very excited about the concept, I have to tell you. I think this is absolutely what is needed, and this is the right time for it, where you have, at the risk of sounding a bit old, a grown-up event, you know, really and truly one that actually delivers on some of the promises to educate people and to raise the image of the cannabis industry. So as we go along, I'd like to make sure we talk about some of the problems like litter, good old, you know, 1960s era stone people, people, and I'm going to be very blunt about this, people urinating and having problems because they wander out after the event or during it. And the other thing that concerns me, that I know concerns some people, I've discussed this with, is consumption and smoking particularly. Now, I know you do not permit tobacco because the state doesn't do that, but smoking in general, I think we need to explain a little bit more about how you will control the consumption and the smoke and that kind of thing, so that people understand that this is not, you know, you're not going to open the door and everybody's going to light, light a joint and spend the next couple of hours relaxing and having a good time and stinking up the citrus fair, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from...
Yeah, I have a few, Mr. Mayor, thank you. You know, when I first started reading through this packet, and this TV screen is right in my line of sight, so I'm kind of jumping up and down, but when I first started reading through the, through the packet, I was really concerned. I just felt that it was possibly a little too early for us to undertake something like this, when we as a city really don't even have our arms around the ordinance that's going to govern this place. I'm really glad to see that it was pushed out six months. It's pushed into 2019, and I'm glad to hear that the focus is not going to be on the party, it's going to be on the educational. The last thing I want to see is another Emerald Cup here at the citrus fair. I do not want to see Cloverdale recognized as the pop town of Sonoma County. I keep repeating this, and I'm going to repeat it one more time. You know, as a city council member, I represent 100% of the community. In the Prop 64 election, the City of Cloverdale voted 58% in favor of passing Prop 64, and 42% said they preferred not to have it in the community. You know, I represent 100%. I got to consider those 42% in every decision I make, and then I keep in mind that 58% said yes, so, you know, more of the yes goes towards that. I think I can get behind this based on the fact that you pushed it out six months and the fact that you're telling us it's going to focus on the educational benefits of the product. I do have some concerns, and by no means do I mean to make this part of my approval. I noticed the Boys and Girls Club was left off the contribution on your slide. Also, in November, we have an election of three council members, and I'm not quite sure any decisions that we may take going forward here, if they can be undone by new, by a new city council if, if we're not re-elected. So...
Do you want me to address that?
Yeah, okay.
If, if you all decide to grant approval tonight, it would be, you would be giving the city manager the authority to give his written authorization, the local jurisdiction's written authorization, to have an event where onsite sales and consumption are happening, and then the wheels would start turning. It's my understanding at the state level, and that's not something that I would say would be repealed. If you did not give approval and someone came forward later to a new council, obviously they could decide, make a different decision.
Okay, thank you. And then, lastly, I see that we have Chief Elliott with us in the audience tonight, and we have our newly-elected sheriff, Mark, and again, congratulations. I'd really kind of like to hear your input. I'm assuming that this is the, the item that you're here for. I'd like to know about security. I know we're going to have to step up our police force this particular weekend, and what type of backup we could get from the sheriff's department, and Brian, I'd be interested in hearing about potential fire hazards or, you know, how the fire department is going to be ready to respond from, from injuries or anything along those lines, so. So that's all I have to say. I would say those would be part of the plan if we get to that point, so at this point, I would ask that you just stand by. Thank you, council member.
Yeah, just thank you for the thorough description of the event. It's, it was, it's a great, you know, first flush at a proposed event, and I look forward to seeing it, you know, fleshed... it, you know, fleshed out a bit in the future. I guess what I'm interested in hearing more about is how you'll address, I mean, I'm hoping that you'll make it a zero-waste event, and that you'll work with your food vendors to see that, because I'd like to see more events like that come to the Citrus Fair, if it's time for Cloverdale, to tend towards zero-waste for our events. And I always, you know, want to thank Mr. King especially, because I really see this event as a direct outgrowth of the original discussions around compassionate use, long before Prop 64, long before recreational use kind of, you know, clouded what we were all working for, and this is before I was on the council, just, you know, attending meetings, that this is just a, it's a natural outgrowth of compassionate use and making sure that people have the medicine and the education that they need to use these products going forward, and to make sure that they're using them safely and that they're supporting, you know, our local business people. So, I'll have some additional questions, probably after, yeah, after the public, but I just want to let you know, just to say thank you, it just seems, it's a very organic...
The public's closed.
Public's closed, okay. Yeah, but I just, I thought it was a very organic outgrowth of those original discussions around compassionate use, and this is the logical next step, is making sure people have the knowledge to use products safely for themselves and their loved ones, so, thank you.
Thank you. And as far as I, you know, I feel a lot of it, I mean, I like the plan, I think it's really laid out well, I think it could be a real benefit to the community and to a lot of the, my biggest concern is I think it's just too quick. I think we put this on hold, I think we put it on hold for a reason, there's a lot of issues regarding zoning, a lot of issues about distance to schools, a lot of distance and concerns that were raised, and those have yet to be resolved, so I'm not feeling comfortable, in my own opinion, moving this forward until we resolve those issues. The location is closer to the school than the other location that we, for the distribution...
Maybe we could ask staff for some clarification, because it was my understanding that for temporary events, that that doesn't apply.
It doesn't.
Maybe Kate could, maybe Kate could clarify that?
Well, what I'm saying is, until we resolve the distance, right now, under our current ordinance, I believe, it would allow it. Is that correct?
Yes.
But we did put the ordinance on hold, we asked that that ordinance come back so we can have this conversation, and this may be one of the things that we're going to have a conversation on, is we look at what are the parameters? You know, I like to pose the question, I respect it to Saturday and Sunday, I respect that school's out, we're also going to have a skate park over there at some point in the future? What happens if next time we get one, it's Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, when school's in? Are we going to have different rules? I think we need to vet those things and come up with a strategy, so we're not basically what I consider shooting from the hip on these things. So, I'm not comfortable moving it forward, based on all the conversation we had over the last ordinance and what we did. I think the timing's bad, I like the plan, I just think if we could hold it off until we go through that ordinance, this may very well be something that we can talk about and have some exceptions for various events carved into that, that we're all on board with, we all understand, but we're not there yet, so that's my comment, so, thank you.
And actually, I was going to ask to make sure, obviously, you know, the legislation at the state level, or the guidelines, they're just a moving target right now, so, you know, we don't have a temporary event as part of our ordinance, and clearly, when we bring our cannabis ordinance back, we need to look at that.
Yeah, and that would be part of the next review, I would say for sure, but any temporary event, I would think going forward, the state regulations are moving target to some extent, but they just readopted the emergency regulations, they've been in effect now for like, three weeks or a couple of weeks, and they're in effect for another six months, while everyone gets to comment and do this, they've been making tweaks. I don't anticipate massive overhauls, they're making changes that make sense right now in terms of like, industry issues, processing, application details, definitions, none of the major policy stuff, and anytime a temporary event license, I don't, I haven't heard about any changes to those parts of the regulation, so anytime someone wanted to do a temporary event in the city, it would always come to you for a review, regardless of what your ordinance said, because your ordinance would have to require that, because it requires local approval, and so if your ordinance gave that discretion to someone, I doubt it would do that, based on every event being such a different animal, but your ordinance could just be very broad and say, we want to, you know, everyone to come forward, but they need a letter from the local jurisdiction with approval, so everyone, in a sense, is going to come before you for a discussion, from now until, I mean, that's just how it will be, so, and currently, they technically, yes, you could have one.
So, if they were asking for a four-day one, we would say, it's up to our discretion.
Right. I just like to have it more laid out in the ordinance, that we've had public input, we've talked about it, we vetted it, and this is what we're prepared to live with as we move forward. Right now, we're making decisions on the fly, and I personally, I'm not comfortable with that. Councilmember Walter.
Mr. Mayor, if I may please, Kate, do we need our ordinance in place to issue this letter to the state?
No, your ordinance, you have an ordinance now, it just doesn't address temporary events.
Right.
So, that would be something you could grant approval for, or could not, and you can take each one as they come, like I said, you don't have to say an all or nothing, yes or no.
You know, Mr. Mayor, respectfully, I, you know, I hate to disagree, but, you know, I feel that I can support this, you know? The event is going to be pushed down the road six months, that's quite a ways down the road. I just think that we can handle this. School is going to be closed on the weekend, you know, I'm ready to give the nod, let's move forward, at least direct staff to come back with answers to our concerns, you know, additional police presence, additional fire presence, how do we handle that? But I'm ready to move forward with it at this point.
You could talk about conditions.
Conditioning, yeah.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I brought up some of the concerns, that are sort of standard concerns, because some of them aren't well addressed here, and I wanted us tonight to take a look at some of those and make sure, like parking, for example, which is actually, to me, the easier of many of the concerns, and see if we can work things out. For example, I believe in some part of the proposal I read, there was a suggestion that you might use the rail station parking, for example, as overflow parking, as well as your own property as overflow parking, and that requires, of course, approval by SMART and all that stuff, and so it should, but I feel as Councilmember Walter does, I don't want to hold everything up when I'm being presented with something which doesn't seem to threaten anybody, doesn't, in fact, this could be the opposite. The onus, of course, will be entirely on all of you, because if you fail, this is going to be a major fail, I'm serious, and it will probably end a lot of our progress in this area, but a success, even a mild success, without problems, without major problems, and the ability to work with the staff and work with the police and the fire departments and make sure that everything in terms of public safety, and also public awareness, public education is provided, could help us tremendously. To solve problems now, that if we don't solve them, are just going to stay here for years and years, and we won't know what we're doing, and I know, as Mr. King knows, I supported the legalization of marijuana early on, because I want to get rid of the black market, because that is not only a black market for marijuana, it's a black market for a lot of other things, and this is a route that individual communities in America are going to have to decide on sooner or later, and certainly in California, this is very important for everybody, and I'm finding, as I check into things, that when the people who organize these events are level-headed people of the current generation, not mine, yours, they are much more likely to be business people, and to handle things like a legitimate business, and much more likely to be able to work with their local governments. So, I support this absolutely, there, I have some questions, and you know, you're going to have to work your way through that, and I know that our police and fire and city staff are going to be the ones who are going to have to handle that with you, but I cannot just abandon this. If this works, you have now, I'm happy that you are talking about 219, not rushing into the, into the time in the fall, I think that's great, and I think it's a perfect time, too, in terms of what goes on in the city and what might conflict with it and all that good stuff. No, I think we have to proceed on this, I'm not sure we'll get another chance if we don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have some follow-up comments?
Just to follow up, I just think it's so important that we remove the stigma and bring this industry out in the light, and this is what we've said we wanted to do with compassionate use, because this isn't, it's not just about compassionate use, it's about economic development for a region, for a trade region, so I would love to be the center of an educational compassionate use, sane, safe cannabis festival, and also, I want to be able to give Mr. King and his partners the assurances that they need to invest in an event that we'll be proud of and that will help us grow with the industry into the future, so I wholeheartedly lend my support.
Okay, I think I'm getting the sense that there is support, but I'm just going to, again, reiterate my feelings and concerns, I feel that because zoning of where we allow certain things is at question, with the review of the ordinance when it comes back, as well as distance to various locations within the city, I cannot support it at this time, so I just want to be real clear on that. So, I certainly support the event, I just think timing, until we work through those issues, makes it hard for me to support it, so, so if somebody wants to introduce something, we can move this thing forward.
Mayor, members of council, if I can, just, I understand that it appears to be that there's at least a majority consensus, but I just, for the council's benefit, want to outline a couple of things. One, there are some options for you presented in the gender report tonight, you know, first of which was to authorize, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a letter to the California Bureau of Cannabis Control, you know, providing written approval for the applicant so they can move forward with event planning. You know, as part of that, you can enact conditions of approval, or otherwise state to staff that you'd like to see certain things, and you could even request that those come back for the council for review and approval. I think it's critical, and it's an important component that was identified by the Citrus Fair, is that there be a security plan. I did want to note that Sergeant Parker did an extensive review of the proposal, and really outlined, to me, a lot of the security issues and concerns that he sees. I think if you decide that you want to move forward tonight and authorize the city manager, that you do include the authority for us to enter into an agreement for law enforcement services for the event. We do think there are going to be some additional city costs related to providing police enforcement, not so much in the event per se, inside, but outside the event and responding to any types of emergencies, so we'd really want to outline, you know, what it would take in terms of additional staffing, police staffing, to support an event like this and make sure it's safe and secure, and cover any overtime and associated city costs for that. And we could, if you agree, include some provisions in the agreement for an event like this, that, you know, the responsible for any exterior litter, obviously, I think Vice Mayor Russell was concerned about public consumption and smoking outside the event, as well as urination, you know, just any fractions that may occur, that would be covered by police, but include some provisions regarding, ensuring that there's a parking plan for the use of the, I think the proposal is use of the Times Square property for temporary parking, but also, you know, encourage and support what I would call a greening of the event, you know, to try to minimize waste, improve recycling, and those kinds of things. A lot of that really is handled and managed through the Citrus Fair, but we can voice support for that. So, that would be, that would be staff's recommendation, if you decide to authorize the city manager to execute a letter of support for the event, you know, otherwise, some of the other options do require, you know, providing some additional details, and maybe that's something you might want to ask, you could say, we recommend you, you support the event via a letter, but bring back the event details, so you might have more feedback. As the mayor opined, you could defer this decision until you have more opportunity to review and comment on the ordinance, and then certainly you could deny this request. You know, again, I just want to point those out, those are options available to you this evening, but if you decide to move forward, we do really recommend that you consider authorizing us to include a law enforcement services plan to cover particularly any additional costs of overtime, and review the security plan for the event. We, you know, first and foremost, want to ensure that any event that we support is safe and secure for the community.
If I might, just on that, yes, that's what I was getting at, and thank you, that we do that. Also, I really would like to see us working with the folks putting this on, to have some information, solid information given to our residents and our businesses, that answers their question, you know, what FAQs do you have about this? Will people be smoking outside, will they do this, will they do that? And let's see if we can't make sure that people have the assurance that the security is in place, that, you know, you're working cooperatively with the city, everything that we've been discussing tonight, and everything that's in the proposal as well, just FAQ kind of thing, does that work? I think it would, huh? Okay, thank you.
It works if you make it a condition, I think, because that, so...
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Go ahead, please.
Can I make a suggestion?
You certainly may.
That we each as city council members, maybe email the city manager our concerns and what we'd like to say, and then, David, if we, if you think, and the mayor thinks that this should go down to a subcommittee, which is a final correlation, put those things together, and then bringing back the proposal at that point in time, with everyone's question that you address. I don't know how else to do it, but...
Well, you have the options, you can make that in the way of a motion, I mean...
Actually, I would move to direct the city manager to write the letter of support, but we would continue to work with the applicant on the public consumption concerns, waste, a parking plan, a greening of the event, a law enforcement agreement, and an FAQ for the community, and that those would be, I think that the applicant has enough of a, we have enough of a relationship to know that we've been really clear with our expectations and that we will work with them over the next few months to make sure that we have these and, you know, any additional concerns addressed, that's...
There's a motion.
But with that being said, Mr. Mayor, Kate, you mentioned that once the letter...
Do you want to second it first, and then we can have a discussion?
He wants to, he wants to talk about it first.
Thank you, so we have a motion, a second, now a discussion, please.
Okay. Kate, you mentioned that once the letter is issued, it can't be retracted.
I mean, you could always try, but I wouldn't recommend that, so...
So, you're saying that we issue the letter after we hammer everything out?
After you do all this.
Yeah, you can do either one.
Your direction would control that, but if you're giving the, it sounds to me like the motion is to give the city manager authorization to write the letter, all the state really needs is the letter saying, this event is authorized for X and Y on these dates, this magic language, and then if you're directing the city manager to work with the applicant, and it's probably a three-way street with Citrus Fair, too, to talk about those other issues and work those out, we could always, you know, get like a side MOU with them on your expectations.
You can offer a substitute motion, that's not done.
So, do you have the motion, you got the, okay, you're good with the motion, you're good with your second, any further discussion on that?
That's fine, that's what I want.
Get a roll call vote on that, please.
Vice Mayor Russell.
Aye.
Councilmember Walter.
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Mayor Fala.
No.
With Councilmember Brigham recused.
Thank you. Congratulations, very good. All right, thank you, guys, for being here.
Can I just say something real quick?
Certainly, go ahead.
I respect your decision, and I will make sure that this is a priority to pull off for not only myself, my community, but you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Let's see, wait for Councilmember Brigham to come back, and we can move on here. All right, we are now on item number 13, review application packet for... All right, we are now on item number 13, review application packet for pre-authorization, or pre-application review and consider action to adopt resolution 041-2018, allowing submittal of a pre-zoning and annexation application for future annexation of the Sonoma County Vintners Co-op 4.67 acre site located at 28145 Old Redwood Highway. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, that item tonight, as just introduced by the mayor, is, is a pre-application review of the proposed annexation or future annexation of a 4.67 acre property located at 28145 Old Redwood Highway. The location of this property is immediately south of the Renner fueling station along South Cloverdale Boulevard, just for your reference. It is, as noted, the property is located in an incorporated area of Sonoma County and falls under the county's jurisdiction. However, it is within the voter-approved urban growth boundary, our urban services boundary, as well as the LAFCO sphere of influence, and therefore, this property is ultimately planned for annexation into the city. This area in general is, is an area that's been studied and is addressed in the city's sewer and water master plans, as well as our general plan. It's generally referred to as the Kelly Road Gateway, and it's envisioned as a master planned area with industrial uses primarily along the Boulevard, with residential uses along the western foothills. The applicant has, again, submitted this proposal statement with their pre-application that identifies various project components, that includes construction of an approximately 100,000 square foot wine storage facility, that also includes about 2,200 square feet of office space. There are proposed construction of two driveway approaches, both on the north and south side of the property, that would allow, you know, large vehicles to enter the space for delivery of, you know, wine-related product, and the applicant has, has identified a total of 50 parking spaces, of which 38 are onsite and 12 are offsite. I do want to note that step generally doesn't count offsite parking in terms of the parking regulation, but I'll talk a little bit more about that. In addition, the applicant has proposed the design dedication and development of some public improvements, primarily along the Boulevard, which include improving the right-of-way for two lanes of travel in the southbound direction, as well as a public sidewalk along the frontage. In addition, the applicant has indicated that they would dedicate 7.5 feet of right-of-way for future construction of street and sidewalk improvements along the northern property boundary. However, the applicant is not proposing to construct those improvements along, along the northern boundary of the property. There, there is an exhibit included in your packet that identifies an alternative standard for road improvements along that northerly road. That, we call it a road, it's really part of what we refer to as the Bumgarner parcel. That parcel is, has been proposed for future development of residential development, and it's something that will come before the council for, for future review. In addition, the, the, the project components have requested the extension of both sewer and water infrastructure to support the project. Obviously, potable water is needed to support the, you know, the site and its use, as well as sanitary sewer. There's a, included in your packet is an exhibit that identifies the extension of a sewer force main that would connect to the existing gravity flow sewer north of the site, basically about midpoint of the Renner parcel, as well as connect to, likewise connect to existing city water services that are, have been brought to the Renner parcel. They're not currently proposing to develop additional, you know, infrastructure that would support otherwise, support future development, it's mainly the infrastructure that would support the proposed project. Previously, the applicant did come before the Planning and Community Development Subcommittee for review and consideration, basically of the extension of services, however, it was determined by LAFCO that they, they do not agree with extending services outside their boundaries to, to a vacant parcel, or unless there's existing kind of health and safety issues, which is, I note that because that was different for Renner, there was an existing development there, and, and LAFCO approved an outside services agreement, so that's not really applicable in this particular instance. Do want to note that the proposal is consistent with the, the city's general plan and zoning ordinance, it's a warehouse use, that is, is a use that is subject to plot plan review under your zoning ordinance. Any new building along the Boulevard also does require major design review. We're not really speaking to those items tonight, those, the plot plan or the, the design review per se, but, but council, as part of this pre-annexation application, is certainly welcome to offer up comments on that. The council in 1991 did adopt a resolution, or excuse me, in 2008, adopted a resolution number 91, 2008, that outlines what's required for pre-application review, particularly related to fiscal impacts, land use impacts, and previous policies and practices of the council. So, included in the annexation request is some fiscal impact data, primarily related to property tax, anticipated assessed valuation and property tax collection for, that would be applicable, should this property be annexed to the city. The, based on the information provided by the applicant, the total tax, it would have a total tax base of about $11 million in AV, and just for reference, that the, you know, the typical property tax of 1%, the city collects on average between 23% and 29% of that 1%. The applicants have identified that there will be no retail sales at this site, so there's no, not anticipated to generate any sales tax revenue, however, it does, they do expect to have about eight to 12 full-time employees that would, that would support, support the warehouse use. In addition, in terms of addressing city, city costs, and particularly of future infrastructure needs, as well as ongoing maintenance costs, the, the project would be required as a condition of approval to play, pay applicable, you know, plan check and plan review and application fees, so that would cover staff processing of this proposal, and should they move forward, would be required to pay applicable development impact fees, you know, for water capacity, wastewater, streets, thoroughfares, et cetera. We, staff had not identified, and neither did the applicant propose, other funding mechanisms for, for council's consideration relative to long-term potential maintenance costs that a project like this might develop. Some maintenance costs that you may want to look at or consider as part of this proposal would be, you know, long-term road maintenance costs, obviously, there's a lot of, or we would expect that there would be, you know, large vehicle traffic generated by a project of warehouse of this type. A traffic study has not been performed, so we don't have specific data at this time to, to share with council, but that may be something that, as a discussion, you may want to consider, whether there's some, some form of maintenance provision for, you know, long-term road costs or other long-term maintenance costs. Staff also identified a couple of other things that we really just want you to bring to your attention as part of this pre-annexation application, and that's really integration of this project with future development of the area. There's a really significant interest in future development of this, what we call the Kelly Road Vision Plan area. As I referenced, there's the Bumgarner parcel that's been in various planning phases, and we anticipate that that would be coming forward for future residential development. Also, immediately to the west of this parcel has been acquired by the Cloverdale Unified School District, so we're talking about, probably, you know, more than likely, that, that proposal hasn't been fleshed out exactly what they plan to develop on that site, but we're looking at a school type of use, probably an elementary school, possibly a high school, or could have, it could even be school administrative uses. You know, last but not least, the, it's indicated they've proposed pretty significant frontage improvements along South Cloverdale Boulevard, to really lend itself to the, the design criteria identified in your general plan, but also so that it's consistent with the current design of South Cloverdale Boulevard along Renner. Again, you'd have two travel lanes heading south, which would really be supportive of the large vehicles that would expect to be utilizing the site. Something you may want to consider is, you know, what kind of frontage improvements might be required on the north property boundary. As you'll see in your packet, there's kind of a sidewalk that kind of heads out to kind of this future right-of-way, we call it a name road, we call it kind of Kelly Road North, and whether you want to consider requiring some, some wrapping around of some improvements there or frontage improvements. One of the considerations, I think, for the applicant is that there are some utility poles there along the northern boundary, so consideration for sidewalk obviously comes with an expense of undergrounding and relocating those utility poles, so that's something for you to consider. If the council decides and agrees to adopt the resolution allowing the applicant to move forward, the, we would expect the applicant to apply for both annexation and pre-zoning, along with a plot plan review and major, major design review, that ultimately would go to commission for review and a recommendation, and that would come back to council for your final approval and authority. Ultimately, if you approve it, it would get submitted to LAFCO for a final approval by the, by the commission. We did meet, the staff's, applicant's representatives and myself did meet with the LAFCO executive officer, and, you know, they did voice support for annexation of this, this parcel. It is, because it is within the sphere, it's consistent with the general plan, and their advice was, you know, go through the process, get it approved by the city council, and then bring it back to LAFCO. So, with that said, that concludes staff's presentation, happy to entertain any questions council may have about the proposal, and then there are representatives here tonight from the CEO of Vintners Co-op, Kevin Dobel with Dobel Thomas, the applicant's engineering firm, as well as Phil Wright, the realtor that represented the transaction.
Thank you, City Manager. Questions from council?
I have one. At one point, we were talking about a group annexation of multiple properties, is that dead?
It's never been started, that's one of our goals, and we've done-
No, I just mean like those two or three properties, not the whole thing.
Yeah.
There was some discussion about that?
We discussed, staff discussed that with the applicant early on, the adjacent properties, I think, are, have a more complex land use approval process.
So, it's dead, you don't have to go into detail, I was just curious.
So, I think the applicant's, there was a request for them to coordinate and have that conversation with, with the neighboring property interests, but I think for the, from their perspective, it's, I mean, I'll let them speak to that, but it's probably more timely to kind of go it alone.
Thank you.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, do you have a question?
No, you know, I'll wait till the question answers.
You have questions?
I have one, Mr. Mayor, thank you. You know, I'm trying to get my arms around what's in this for the city. David, I'm going to ask you later, so if you might want to start calculating while the applicant gives their presentation, I'd like to know exactly what the tax revenue is on that parcel to the city.
It's right here.
I know you've got 11 million, but I know we don't get, that's the value, and how much of that is going to trickle to us.
Got it.
Okay. Thank you. Melanie, do you have any questions coming?
Not yet.
Okay, so, thank you. Well, welcome, and who would like to start? Kevin, thank you. If you could, just be sure to sign the book there, so we got your name.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, my name's Kevin Dobel with Dobel Thomas and Associates, working as a consultant for the Vintners Co-op, Vintners Co-op project. I think the, the Vintners Co-op is excited to have an opportunity to be in Cloverdale. They provide a tremendous amount of vital services to the wine industry in Sonoma County. As you know, wine storage is very hard to come by, and it's a very important part of that whole industry, and I'm really pleased to have an opportunity to work on this project. I'm here today with Nick Wilson, who's the general manager of the Vintners Co-op, and Phil Wright, who's the agent for the Vintners Co-op. I didn't prepare a presentation tonight, I am here to, we are here to answer questions that you may have, I'm certain there will probably be some. We did a lot of work with staff, we thank the city manager and the planning staff for their cooperation with us. We hope that if there's discussion or dialogue related to some of the discussion points in your agenda packet, that you allow us an opportunity to also comment and have dialogue with you on those. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to open this up to the public, would anybody in the public like to address the city council on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public input and bring it back to council, so, who would like to start?
I'll just, you're good?
Vice Mayor, go ahead, please.
Just very quick, I was wondering, we have a note here about eight to 12 jobs to start out, that's nice, but I was curious about what they are in terms of basic job descriptions, because that would relate to whether or not we would have local people to fill them, and it also, you know, affects the traffic and that kind of thing. And the other, I have to, I have to confess, I always worry about the long-term costs to the city, particularly for roads and various other things, because we don't get a whole lot of money for that. I'm the chair of Sonoma County Transit Authority, and I can tell you, we work on a lot of streets and a lot of roads, but there just is not enough money, and I can see the city bearing more and more and more of this as time goes by, it worries me a lot. So, I have an interest in the jobs, because that tells me a little bit more about the value directly to the city and the people here, but I also have to tell you that I am concerned about doing something about the long-term maintenance costs.
Okay, thank you. Did anybody want to address that yet, or? Please, again, state your name for the record.
Yeah, Nick Wilson.
Thank you.
So, the, the warehousing jobs that we'll have will be foreclosed operators primarily, and then somebody for a leadership position, probably a supervisor or warehouse manager. The qualifications are fairly minimal, I'm sure that we could definitely find people in Cloverdale to, to support that kind of job, yeah.
What do you anticipate is, I know this is difficult to do, but what do you anticipate would be, not your maximum, but your ultimate staffing? Let's see, if you were operating absolutely at full tilt, everything working wonderfully?
Probably 15 would be on the high end, yeah.
15, okay, that's about what I thought, okay. Good, good, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody want to talk about the maintenance on the roads and the other concern that was just raised? Okay, well, I'm not putting you on the spot, I just want to give you an opportunity to share your thoughts on it.
Yeah, actually, when the agenda was posted, that, that was the first we'd heard of, you know, that topic for discussion, you know, we hadn't really explored it. I do know that there's a tremendous amount of capital expense going into the frontage improvements. If you drive down Cloverdale Boulevard, you can see there's a lot of elevation change between the actual road and the site, so there's going to be a tremendous amount of work involved in making a safe pedestrian access and getting the travel lanes to work. We fully expected that coming into this, you know, we reviewed the general plan, we know what the ultimate street width was needed. In terms of long-term maintenance, I don't know what mechanism you would use for addressing that, I mean, you know, we're at the, really at the beginning in this process, you know, we're open to discussing whatever we need to discuss about addressing those issues. Again, we really are at a point where we've, the clients have invested enough money for us to study it and put together some preliminary plans, we need to get to the next step, which is the major design review process, where we actually get into the details and we'll really be able to quantify some of those items.
Good, thank you. Okay, any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. First of all, on page 138 of the staff report, the directors and shareholders with 10% or more, I'm, I'm pleased to see some local names, Fritz, the Ed St. John, also Dry Creek Vineyards, and Hook and Ladder from Geyserville, I'm really pleased to see that. David, did you come up with a number of what the city could expect in property tax on that?
I, I did, I'll, I'll give it to the council as a range, so, based on the tax base of 11.3 million, of course, the, the standard 13 tax rate is 1%, so that's $113,660. I calculated if we estimated between 20 and 30% of that being local sales tax- I calculated if we estimated between 20 and 30% of that being local sales tax that comes to the city of Cloverdale, that would be $22,732 on the, on the low end, or up to 30, approximately $34,000 on the high end per year.
A property tax.
Property tax.
Yeah. So we're not going to pave a lot of roads with that, are we?
Nope. But will we pave that road?
Right. Remember, that goes, that property tax revenue goes into your general fund, and, I mean, one of the big departments that is paid for through general funds is your police department.
Right.
Police department services are required for these types of projects. You know, it's just providing general police support and, you know, addressing security concerns.
Yeah, but we're talking maybe $30,000 a year.
Right.
I mean, the police officer, I mean, what's it cost us to have him on the street? The only point I'm getting at is, I'm looking at revenue for the city, gentlemen. You know, I, I see you coming in doing a beautiful building, you walk away, you rent it out for storage. What's the city get out of that? You know, we get to fix the roads 10 years from now if we don't have some mechanism in place now. So that, that really concerns me. Also, I'd like to see some type of oversized utilities, maybe run into the south side of your property. You'd be reimbursed by anybody that taps into that later on, I'll go the whole one. I'm really interested in not necessarily seeing the utility lines from the telephone poles undergrounded now, but I'd like to see the conduits there, so that when we do that whole section, they're already being placed. Educate me a little bit on a couple of things. Sales tax on rental space. Is there any sales tax generated when the customer reserves and rents space from you?
I don't believe it's not a retail facility. The Co-op is exactly what it is. It's a Co-op. It's made up of 130 Vintners from Sonoma County. They all pay into this organization so they can store their product. And some have very, various levels of investment, and Nick can probably speak more to the finances of that organization. In terms of utilities, we fully expect to underground all of the overhead utilities on Cloverdale Boulevard. That's not an option. They have to be undergrounded if we're going to widen the street. We're providing a full bike lane south. We're providing parking. We're disconnecting the sidewalk. We're doing a lot of improvements to that stretch. It's about 300 feet of Cloverdale Boulevard. It's, that's going to be improved, so it's pretty significant. The utilities related to future connections, we are going to size the sewer and water mains, the sewer main along the frontage of the property. The Cloverdale master plan for sewer requires that there's actually a lift station further south on Kelly Road. We're going to plum and cap a sewer main for future use to gravity to that future force main. So we're fully anticipating all those future components to this, and it really does close the gap between where your current city limit line is and Kelly Road, which is actually the main east-west component of that whole southwest annexation area. It's a county road, county right-of-way. It helps close that gap, which I think is really important to the city. I think it also helps, we, with the dedication of the seven and a half feet along the north property line, we actually would be making it easier for the developments to the west of us to actually build a road. And we went through the effort of actually designing and working with the city staff to come up with a road concept and establish that right-of-way line based upon that concept. So I think there is, there is benefit to the city. Maybe not in tax revenue, but jobs, the amount of people that are involved in the Co-op, having a base in Cloverdale, I think, is important.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Continuing the educational process for me, are you going to be storing bulk wine, or is it just going to be labeled case wines?
Yeah, all the wines will be case goods and empty bottles in cases. There's no bulk wine, no barrels, nothing like that.
How about the Shiners? Will you be transacting?
Yeah, yes.
Will they be going back and forth from different wineries? And again, I'm going for sales tax. Would sales tax be on Shiners?
No, I don't believe so. I mean, yeah, I mean, we're purely a storage facility. We're not, we're not retail, so I'm looking, giving sales tax.
I'm still looking for revenue for the city.
Right.
And that's it for now.
Thank you.
I might have more here.
Thank you.
I'm also, you know, concerned about the viability of those road developments, so I would be interested in establishing that maintenance district or something to that effect, because I think I'm following council member Walter's concern that it's not enough to cover our costs for maintaining that, especially when we're looking at the size of the trucks that I'm sure that they'll be using. It's a, it's just not a, it's not a regular use. It's going to be a continual inflow and outflow of big trucks, and they just, they do a lot more damage than, than regular vehicle traffic. So I would be interested in seeing that be part of the agreement.
And then just the last thing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. You know, I could support it if there was some enhancement to the city, and I look 10, 15 years down the road when it's time to repave that street. You know, so I like the idea of a community, the facilities district, where that money would be set aside in a restricted fund that will strictly go for the repaving of that section of street. And as a matter of fact, going forward on any project that the city approves, this council member is going to be looking for that, a utility district, so.
Thank you. Couple of comments I have. First of all, I wanted to ask the city manager, I know we're looking at the need to signalize that particular off-ramp and treadway at Cloverdale Boulevard. What impact would this, and would there be any set-aside monies that would go towards that project based on that?
The project would be subject to the current adopted street and thoroughfare impact fee that was in place at the time that building permits were pulled for the project. And at that time, the, whatever the fee that was in place, we have one currently, but it could, you know, changes at the start of fiscal year would be applicable, and that fee would help to pay for the cost of signalization of treadway and sentinel lane.
Okay. Thank you. So my comments, I guess, I'd like to have you at least take another look at that north, the footage, the frontage improvements along the northern boundary. I don't know how the city would be in a position to fund that at some time in the future. And that's going to be just basically an unfinished road along between Renner and your project. So I'd like at least to have that discussion, discussion. And I do support, we need to find a mechanism to support the long-term maintenance costs for those roads with the heavy rigs in and out of there. We, you know, so the traffic signalization's important because of the, the amount of traffic that's going to come through those intersections, and it's already a problem, and adding more is just going to exacerbate the problem. So those are the two areas I'd like to see more, more discussion on right there. But I support it. I think the six, the 12, the 15 jobs are important. I think it's a nice project. There's a need for it. We're certainly part of the wine country. They need a place to store it, and Cloverdale's a good place to call home, I think. So I'm certainly on board, but the city, as you know, we've had the conversations, not a wealthy city, and we make, got to make sure these projects pay their own way. So that's kind of where we're at.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name's Phil Wright, and I was the broker that handled the transaction, and we came to the city about, oh, it's almost a year ago, or a little more than a year ago, and presented this project with the idea that, that the city would be in support of this. And they had several meetings, and we were in a long escrow, and the Co-op finally came to a comfort level that the city would support this. It seems to be zoned appropriately. There's other development to the west, which I understand are coming in very soon. And this last week, I understand that the school has closed on the parcel to the west. So in your long-term plan, it seems like that you've, you've already designate, designated that area as a, an area for future development. And with all that, I think you're going to need all of those parcels coming in, looking at, you know, how do you get to Kelly Road and beyond? And I've been in the development business for over 30 years, and being in the residential development area, I know that we always went to the city asking for, how do we get different people to pay for frontages as part of the improvement? And in, in almost every case, the residential developer had to pay his own way, because that was the majority of the impact. And the Baumgardner property owns that road that goes out to Cloverdale Boulevard. So normally, the onus is on that developer to develop that road, and if he can get dedicated road whiffs, I mean, that's usually a plus. But to have the adjacent property owners pay for a roadway going back to his residential development, I haven't seen that at all in my career. And so we have been in contact with the developer, and he would, of course, like the improvements to be put in for him, but the reality is that, that the Co-op has no use to that road whatsoever. And it's a future road, but it's a future road for his development. So it would seem like that would be, the onus should be on him to do that particular development. And you've got a school going in, you're going to have to have a collector road out to Kelly Road. I know that there's other parcels to the south that are looking to come in. So there just seems like enough players, excuse me, in the near future that, that can support that whole area in an annexation. The Co-op is, is prepared to pay their, their full share of the development on that particular site, and to extend services out, size them and so forth. But, but to, at this particular point, they just need to get to the annexation to be able to get before you to, to set conditions and so forth. And it seemed like this meeting was set up to support the annexation, and then the subsequent meetings were going to be to iron out all the questions that you've brought up tonight.
Good.
That was our understanding, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That clarifies it. Yeah, go ahead, councilman.
Well, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for that input. You know, we found in the past that it's, it's a lot easier and more beneficial for the city to negotiate going in as opposed to going ahead and giving the nod for the annexation. I'd like to see everything laid out prior to that. As far as your improvement, you know, it's my understanding, and I could be wrong, that any improvement that you do on Kelly Road, as the other projects come in, they'll pay their fair share of what it cost you to improve that road. Is that correct, David?
That's an option for the council to consider, whether we enter into a reimbursement agreement. Typically, a reimbursement agreement is executed when utilities are oversized. So I think as the applicant engineer indicated, if they were to place a sewer line in the frontage, that could be something that would be subject to reimbursement. If they were to do frontage improvements, again, it would be on their property, and so normally, even though it, it may be, a sidewalk is supportable by other developments, that isn't necessarily a cost that is reimbursed by, by other developers.
So then, so then if I'm understanding the applicant correctly, no tractor-trailer will ever back into that Kelly Road facility and spend the night or a couple hours?
Well, I wanted to clarify, it's not Kelly Road. It's, it's, it's a private parcel owned by, formerly owned by the Baumgardner Ranch. It's private property. They wouldn't have the right to access it. Our site's designed so that we do not use that strip of land, primarily because that strip of land's private property. We didn't expect to be able to go on someone else's property and build our driveway. So we use the public right-of-way, which is there for us to use, and we're improving that public right-of-way. I think another aspect of this, looking at the, the long-term potential for that area of Cloverdale to annex, is LAFCO has some pretty significant rules about islands, and they want continuity. And this parcel is one step closer to Kelly Road, which is the county road to the south. And if this parcel doesn't develop or annex, then the parcels to the south of us that have much more potential for benefit to the city, the schools, residential housing, which is desperately needed, improvements to Cloverdale Boulevard, biking pedestrian circulation from Foothill to Cloverdale Boulevard out Kelly Road, all of those things become more, much more difficult to achieve.
You're absolutely right. By the same token, I don't think that's going to deter the city from making sure that every project pays its way.
Sure.
And if you decide that this isn't the parcel for you, that's your business decision to make, and the city will move forward. But if you decide it is, then there's expenses we expect to have paid.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm not saying that that's not, that's not where we're coming from. My, my point is just that we're trying to work cooperatively. They've offered a dedication of their own land, seven and a half feet by 200 and something feet, so that it could facilitate the orderly development to the west. We're trying to understand what the issues are. It's, it's also, we have to manage the expense of, even if we were to come back with a plan and say we didn't have to build it, we have to design a plan, we have to understand what the development to the, to the west of us needs to design that road. And so, you know, we're, we're talking with the neighbors, obviously. The communication lines are open. In a perfect world, I think that would be what would happen. We just happen to be in a position of, I think, going first. And again, we want to get to that detailed stage, I think, before more investment is made into lines on paper and designs and studies and impact fees. All of those things need to be put on the table for us to, to address.
Thank you. So, so that clarifies it for me. Thank you for that. The north roadway, the north between Renner and that, and your property there, I would at least like to see sidewalks on your side of the road going up. So, yeah. So, anyway, so my understanding is this is just to authorize the application, so there's a lot more work, but I think it's a great, great project. I really appreciate you looking at Cloverdale to become your home, and hope to make this work. Somebody like to introduce this?
I'd like to introduce this by title only. City of Cloverdale, City Council Resolution Number 041, 2018, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale, allowing submittal of a pre-zoning and annexation application for future annexation of the Sonoma County Vintners Co-op, 4.67 acre site located at 28145 Old Road Highway, APN 114040053.
Okay, so we have a second.
Discussion?
We have a second by Councilmember Russell. Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure that we still have on the table the community facilities district, even with the letter being issued. We'll work that detail out.
Mayor, council members, correct. I've noted all, all the council's comments, including the desire to establish an appropriate program for financing long-term maintenance costs related to road impacts for the project.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye. Thank you.
We are now moving down to item number 14. Consideration and possible adoption of Resolution 042, 2018, authorizing the city manager, city manager to execute a 2018 lease agreement between the City of Cloverdale and NorCal Sky. execute a 2018 lease agreement between the City of Cloverdale and NorCal Skydiving. City Manager.
Good evening again, Mayor, councilmembers. The item before you is a completely new lease agreement between the city and NorCal Skydiving. The city has previously entered into a lease agreement with NorCal Skydiving dating back to 2009. There were various amendments to that agreement that were, that are outlined in your agenda report. In May of 2018, Tyler Wareham, who's in the audience this evening, did provide email notice to the city that they're interested in executing an updated lease. And included in your agenda report are the requested terms. Mr. Wareham, on behalf of NorCal Skydiving, requested a new lease agreement that, you know, revised the references to the old non-existent conditional use permit that has now lapsed, a lease term for five years with five options to renew, and keeping the consideration for the lease amount at the same amount as it was, currently at seventeen hundred and fifteen dollars a month, along with some change in the default language. The proposed terms were reviewed by the Airport Subcommittee, and there was a discussion about some proposed revisions to the terms, and I'd like to review those with council. Our recommendation, and based on feedback at the Airport Subcommittee, was a three-year term with the option for one renewal for an additional three-year period of time. That, in terms of monthly lease payments, that they would start with the same base monthly rent payment of seventeen hundred and fifteen dollars. Want to note that previously, there was a past use amount fee that had been collected so that, you know, technically, what would be the amount paid would be less than what they had previously because the past amount fee has been relinquished and paid off. The lease agreement would include a provision that the lease rate would be adjusted annually by the Consumer Price Index. So that would be a determination that would usually be made in the month of April, and then it would be effective July 1st. And finally, kind of a new provision, as council knows, it's been really challenging to address long-term maintenance costs and capital improvements at the airport. We've included a provision in the lease agreement that the leasing would pay a fifty-dollar monthly capital improvement fee for the term of the agreement. The purpose of that fee would to start generating a capital fund that could be used for airport improvements. Obviously, it's a very small amount, but we figure, you know, you're looking, if you look at the life of this agreement, six hundred dollars a year times three years, eighteen hundred dollars. Small amount, but it could be used to fund some important maintenance projects that I know are, that are important to our airport manager. And what our goal would be, working closely with the airport manager, is establish this similar program with other leases at the airport, so we could start to build a capital improvement fund to help us really fund some of the improvements that the airport leases would like to see. City staff, you know, utilized the 2015 agreement as a template. It was really updated with these new provisions. Tyler Wareham did indicate he was in agreement with the new provisions. We did not change the default section as requested because we kept it, we felt it was important to keep it consistent with using the FAA as the entity that deems any particular injury. What staff is recommending tonight is that you adopt the resolution in your packet, which would authorize the city manager to execute the 2018 lease agreement, and that's included in your packet with the proposed lease. That concludes staff's report, and happy to entertain any questions you may have, and certainly recommend you receive any input from Mr. Wareham.
Thank you. Questions from council, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a quick one, and bear with me. On page 154, which is page one of two of email communication between City Manager David Kelly and Tyler Wareham of NorCal Skydiving, I was wondering, number twenty-five, the item in the agreement, under default, they requested a change of language, and this doesn't contain that. Was that, what was the reason for that?
We didn't think that that language was favorable to the city.
No, I don't think it is. I was wondering.
We would really rely on the appropriate regulatory bodies to, well, I think the applicant's asking that we reference regulatory bodies.
Yeah, I mean, it works for the applicant.
This is being deemed serious by the city. We thought it gives us the appropriate ability to bring something back to council, and if there are issues that need to be considered.
I always want to know when something's requested very specifically like that. I thought it might have something to do with the wording, but I wanted to be sure, because you're just curious, to make sure. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, just a comment, and unfortunately, Councilmember Russell was unable to join us at the Airport Subcommittee where we were discussing this. I just, I feel that, and in the interest of full disclosure, we did, you know, talk about the renewal terms. We definitely were favorable staff, and I discussed the three-year term, and we're comfortable with that based on future development. But if the council were interested in then making their renewals year-to-year, that's also an option. I just wanted to let you know that we would have to. I'm in favor of approving this lease for the three years, but if there was support for after the three years, having one-year renewals, because then we'll just have, after the three years, we'll have a better feel for the development that's going on in that area, that's an option that you might want to consider.
Thank you for sharing that, because that was the one question.
Oh, there you go.
No, that answers it very well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also have that question, because we know both on the west side and the east side, south of Cloverdale, things are starting to happen, and I'd just like to make sure that the options of the city are kept open. With that being said, I know the answers to these, but I'm going to ask them, just so that it's in the record, David, and for the benefit of those folks that are at home. The last time this lease came in front of us, we had some issues. Some things weren't done in a timely manner. The trailer needed to be removed, and I know that's been done. Handicap bathrooms, I know we've completed that with a handicap porta potty. The paving had to be done in front of the hangar for the handicap parking. I think all that's been done. So as it stands right now, the lessee is in good standing with all requests. Copies of the insurance policies, indemnifications for the city, all of that is in place, I's dotted and T's crossed.
That is, that's correct with respect to all of the land development issues. As part of this agreement, we will request, you know, prior to final execution, to ensure that we have final updated insurance on file.
Okay. Then I can support it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Are you any comments? Okay. So I'd like to open this up to the public, but any members of the public like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing no one rise, we'll bring it back to council. And we have a resolution here. Would somebody like to introduce it? And I would like to add.
The applicant is in, if he wants to say anything.
Yeah, there's opportunity. Yeah, thank you. I would like to see not, the renewal be year-to-year after the three-year lease. So I'd like to ask for that modification to that.
So, Mr. Mayor, in that case, I'd like to recommend the resolution by title only as amended.
Can I ask one question on the amendment?
Certainly.
Is it three one-year renewal terms then, instead of one three-year renewal? Because we usually set a max.
Yeah.
Three one-year renewals.
Yes.
After the initial three years.
After the initial three years.
Does that sound good to everyone?
That sounds really good, thank you.
Just for clarification, would you like those renewals to come back to you, or would you like to have that be at the discretion of the city manager?
I'd like to see it go to the Airport Subcommittee for a discussion, and unless there's an issue, it could be handled at that level. Yes.
In that case, City of Cloverdale, City Council, Resolution Number 042-2018, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale, authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement between the City of Cloverdale and NorCal Skydiving LLC for leased premises located at the Cloverdale Municipal Airport.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have most second. Any discussion on the motion? Get a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Briggum?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Thank you for being here. Okay, we are moving right along. We're on item number fifteen. Discussion and possible action on appointment of a two council, up to two council members, to an ad hoc committee for the purpose of reviewing and recommending updates to the City of Cloverdale's existing emergency operations, plans, and programs. And this is one of the ones that we've talked about, where there's an effort throughout the county to try to come up with some policy. City Manager, I'll let you take that.
That's correct, Mayor Paula. The item was brought on the agenda at the direction of the council at your previous meeting, and so we wanted to agendize it so that council could discuss and take action on establishing an ad hoc committee. This came about when I gave an update to the council about possible lease agreement by the Red Cross for the senior center, and council indicated that I think that their desire to establish an ad hoc to, you know, be able to review and recommend updates to our existing operations, emergency operations, plans, and programs for such things like the lease agreement with Red Cross, because that's considered part of, sheltering is an integral part of our emergency operation plan. And so we agendized this accordingly, so you can have that discussion and appoint your ad hoc members.
Thank you. And then also, just to take a look at our existing ordinance, Chapter 2.44, which is totally outdated, and it certainly is not something that we're operating within. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done. So that's what the intent of this is. So what's council's desire on this?
I'd like to volunteer for this because I have a strong interest. Also, it, which it may do with a number of us here, it interweaves with things I'm doing in other areas, particularly related to the county, whether it's regional climate protection or more importantly, Sonoma County Transit Authority, SMART, and now Health Action Council, which is part of the Department of Human Services. We're doing very well getting a chapter here, by the way, thanks to Rebecca Ennis and also our contact in the county, Beth Dadko. All of these organizations are moving together, and yet at the same time, we're working with the county itself. And the big thing is to try to pull all of this together so that we're essentially using the same principles, assuming they work where we are. In fact, I just sent today our city manager an email description of a new program that's coming in that is kind of post-disaster program for mental health, that I think will be very valuable, and something that through the Health Action Chapter that we've built up, which is, I hope, about to be made official soon, we could actually institute in Cloverdale for any kind of emergency. So there are a lot of things going on, but I'd like to make sure we're hooked into transportation, you know, and that we're hooked into the county in terms of the health. So I'd like to volunteer if there are no others.
Thank you. And hopefully, it's going to include also the needs of types of training, working both inner-city as well as countywide.
Yeah, I'm just saying that's something.
No, no, I'm saying it's a big picture, but thank you. Any other council member have an interest I know you are currently working on?
Yeah, and I'm wondering how they would intertwine with this little ad hoc committee, Jimmy DiMartini, Kate and Bonnie from the Citrus Fair, trying to coordinate the center, the Citrus Fair, and how we'd be better prepared. Would they be welcome to attend these without the meetings being agendas?
Oh, yeah, they would have to. In fact, I've already recommended them.
Okay, so we'll have, so Vice Mayor Russell and Councilmember Walter will be the ad hoc, and I'll certainly give you some thoughts that I have. And I know I would assume the police chief will be probably staffed to that as well as a city manager, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And it's a good time to kind of work with the other agencies as well, so.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, on that note, is it all right now if I bring up that last week Cloverdale missed a multiple-city county-wide safety meeting in Santa Rosa? And we, I don't know if we were ever noticed or invited, but it happened last week.
I think the answer is no to both.
Okay.
So, but those are the things I think, I think those are the things, once we get this ad hoc, we need to reach out, and we need to be part, getting these notifications and participating.
That might be the first item that the Subcommittee takes up, is making sure we get on the invitation list.
I like that. So would you like to make a motion on this?
Make a motion that we form an ad hoc?
Form an ad hoc?
Ad hoc committee with Vice Mayor Russell and Councilmember Walter.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion second. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any dissent? Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you both. It's really an important ad hoc. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. Okay, so we will move on to Subcommittee Reports. Airport, Councilmember Bagby.
We next meet on October 2nd.
Okay, Finance, Administration, and Police, Councilmember Briggum?
Our next meeting is June 28th.
Perfect. Planning, Community Development, Councilmember Bagby?
We met this afternoon, and I can give you a very quick update because it was, and actually, Councilmember Briggum, if you would chime in at any moment, and City Manager Kelly, we mostly talked with Six Acres Water Company about their progress and possible annexation into the city. And members of the South Cloverdale Water Company were invited to just kind of get a feel for what the process would look like, and we decided to have more, and we decided to have more meetings. That about sums it up, unless, unless Councilmember Briggum would like to add anything.
Well, the only thing I'd like to add is that's the first time now that we've had both water districts in the same room at the same table. Because I've been looking at this for, what, twenty-five, thirty years, the problems we have on Church Lane. So at least we're all in the same room now, at the same table, but this is going to be a long one.
Yeah. Yeah. But the people who attended, I mean, I think almost, we could almost take over the world with that group, including Sage. It was a very positive, very, very open group, and will, it might just, this might be the tipping point. We'll see what happens.
It might be.
Might be.
There was quite a bit of restraint by the one group.
That's okay.
So, but I think it's at least an open dialogue now.
Good, excellent.
Anything else?
Well, those residents don't want to be annexed. Am I correct on that assumption?
I think everybody wants to be annexed and have new streets, and they're just all worried about the cost. This is not an affluent neighborhood.
And I think that the thing that the city can offer is the structure to have the discussion. I mean, you know, one of the first things that came up was, well, what about my chickens? And what about my horses? I said, well, you know, you can, we can have, you can have chickens in Cloverdale. And they're like, really? So I think part of the challenge is really educating them about, you know, what is possible and where things are negotiable, the grant money that's available from the state, but then also some opportunities to maybe, you know, get some help from the county. And I think that they left understanding that they'll actually have more resources if the two of the, if we have a bigger area of annexation. So I think that that was important. I think I see the role of the city as being educational initially, and I think that there will be more buy-in as time goes on, or they'll all flip out and say, no way, Jose. So that, one of those two things will happen. And that's, that's pretty much what it was.
Good. And when it comes to cost, the county of Sonoma has to be part of that conversation as well, because to make the annexation happen, they got to step up as well, so. Okay, anything else? Thank you for that. Public Works, Vice Mayor Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next meeting is July 24th at 10:30 a.m. at City Hall.
Okay, great. And the Joint City Fire District, that is mine, and we have not set a date yet. I know the fire chief has been unavailable in July, so our staff's looking to try to work out a date that works with their board as well, so, to be determined. Joint City School District, our next meeting, because of summer recess, will be September 17th, 5 o'clock, City Hall Conference Room. So, okay, that ends that. Now we have council reports. Now, we have council reports. Anybody have anything to report? There's two of them. One was on our dais, one's in the packet. Anybody else have anything? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just very quick, I'll be sending mine, emailing mine in to Linda Moore, but I did want to point out that on Friday, I had the honor and pleasure of officially welcoming, I believe it was 37 certified tourism ambassadors from the County Tourism Board, who were invited by the Chamber of Commerce and by one of our residents, who is a certified tourism ambassador. So, he did a very good thing. And they sampled lots of good things in Cloverdale, and I have to tell you, it was wonderful.
Yeah.
Yeah, the vibes were tremendous, and they, they couldn't be nicer, and this is such a wonderful connection for us, and I wanted to thank the Chamber. Kudos to them again. I think they really scored one.
Yeah, and I want to thank you for fulfilling that. I, I was not able to attend.
Yeah, I explained it. You weren't able to attend.
I appreciate you, you being there, so. Okay, anything else? Okay, we'll move on to Legislative Report. Anything? Seeing none there?
No reports, Mayor.
City manager report?
One thing I just wanted to share with council is that we did receive confirmation from your student liaison, Sammy Santana, that she will be attending college at San Jose State.
Excellent.
And with the receipt of her email confirmation, we did issue a check for her, her $500 scholarship to Santana.
Great.
So, I think it's our finance team for processing that payment. We haven't yet received confirmation from Everett. I, I'm sure he's trying to make choice among his many opportunities.
Yeah, he's got options. He's got options. Good, and then we'll have our new student liaisons starting that back up in September, I believe. Yeah. So, good. Okay, City Attorney Report. None. All right. Council Direction on Future Agenda Items. Seeing none? We will go ahead and adjourn our regular meeting to our next regular meeting, Tuesday, July 10th. Closed session will be at 5 o'clock at the City Hall Conference Room, followed by Public Business at 6 o'clock here at the Performing Arts. Thank you, everybody. Staff, thank you so much.